Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. Good afternoon, my colleagues. We are now going to be hearing a presentation around affordable housing, deep dive presentation on Durham's homeless continuum of care. It'll be 25 minutes, and so I'm going to the resource person, Amber Wade.
Thank you.
We'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you. Happy New Year, and no, I'm not Amber Wade.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. That's perfectly all right. But Happy New Year, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Members of Council, Reginald Johnson, Director of Department of Community Development. We have pleased to be here with you to discuss homelessness and the work that we're doing in homelessness. I'm going to make some brief introductory comments and then turn it over to Colin Davis, our homeless manager, to conduct the presentation. The main thing I want to do, in addition to wishing you a Happy New Year on behalf of Community Development Department, is to share some public thank yous. The city, particularly as it relates to white flags, since it's been cold recently, the city has a contract with Open Table Ministry to provide hotel rooms during the cold weather season. We call that white flag when the temperature moves to below 32 degrees. During the cold snap at the end of December, Open Table Ministry provided motel rooms for 24 adults and 18 two-year-old children, 42 people total with rooms in motels. And so we want to say thank you for them. We also want to say thank you to Urban Ministries and Families Moving Forward, two of our nonprofit organizations. They have Urban Ministries and Families Moving Forward stepped up using their own resources to assist several more households. Urban Ministries assisted two additional women and four additional men. And Families Moving Forward opened up their community rooms to provide three additional families with shelter during the cold snap. We're currently working to increase the number of motel rooms available as well as ensuring Urban Ministries and Families Moving Forward will have the funds needed to continue operating the overflow spaces for the remainder of the cold weather season. Prior to the pandemic, our white flag program was not as large as it is today. The COVID funds we received allowed us to expand the program during the pandemic. We are now sustaining program using local dollars. And so I just wanted to make that aware, since that's kind of pertinent to what's going on. The final thing that I would like to do is to thank the homeless team that we have with us. We have Colin Davis is here, but also Lloyd Smidler, Ruby Holmes, Melvin Henry, Melissa Hernandez. And we also have two positions that we're filling. The reason I raise that is a point, when I came to the department 10 years ago, there was only one person that worked on homelessness. And so I want to say thank you to the council and the manager for adding the additional staff to meet the work that we're doing and meeting the homelessness community. And so I just want to say thank you for that. And with that, as it relates to homelessness in this presentation that you're going to learn quite a bit about, I'll turn it over to our fearless leader of homelessness for Durham, Colin Davis, who is our manager. Colin?
Thank you, Reginald, and good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager, City Council. Colin Davis, Community Development Department, manager of the homeless system, as Reginald shared. So I am going to attempt to give you a brief overview of the homeless system and the multiple hats that we wear as the city and as community development managers of the homeless system. I joked with Amber, I said, how long do we have? She said, about 25 minutes. I said, this is really about a half day or a full day presentation, but we'll get through as far as we can if we please ask questions. It is a little bit nuanced and tricky with a lot of the stuff we do in community development. So today, we're going to try and do an overview of the system, what the city's role is, the public funding that helps us do what we do, and of course, answer any questions that you all may have. So we'll start off. HUD has required every jurisdiction that receives federal HUD funding to have what is called a continuum of care. So Durham's continuum of care is the collaboration of all of the homeless service providers and interested entities, and we want to bring in as many stakeholders as possible. Your ideal continuum of care includes law enforcement, hospitals, jails. So we do have representation of our educational systems. We have a seat on the Homeless Services Advisory Committee, which is our governing body for law enforcement and housing authority and other stakeholders that interact with households that are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And our Homeless Services Advisory Committee is essentially our Board of Directors. It's kind of an interesting decision-making body as the Homeless Services Advisory Committee itself does not have any true legal entity. They make recommendations on approving proposals that would go to HUD for funding or to the state for funding, similar to City Council making, or similar to community development staff making a recommendation to City Council, for City Council to approve a contract going to a service provider for the mayor, for the city manager to sign. The Homeless Services Advisory Committee takes the information provided by the scoring committees and advisement and recommends to HUD or to the state, these are the contracts we recommend you entering into contract with these providers to provide homeless services in Durham. In the Homeless Services Advisory Committee, we have a minimum of 19 members, maximum of 29. Four of those members are appointed by the city, four are also appointed by the county, and there are several institutional seats, like I talked about, Duke, NCCU, the law enforcement seat. Trying to remember the others off the top of my head, there's several. The Homeless Services Advisory Committee as a governing board does have several committees that do a lot of the legwork. So a lot of the day-to-day work that has to be done is done in the Executive Committee of Planning Meetings and Approving Appointments to various committees. Policy and Planning is looking at our strategic plan, setting benchmarks, trying to find solutions to challenges. So recently, the Policy and Planning Committee has been looking at white flag. What can we do better? How can we make it larger? Is it possible to make it larger? The Performance Management Committee is the committee that's really looking at how each individual organization that provides homeless services carries out that work. Are they following best practices? Are they hitting the continuum of care's established benchmarks for success? Are they in compliance with HUD regulations? The Performance Management Committee is also the scoring committee that looks at applications that come in for state and federal funds. And we do use the Performance Management Committee to help evaluate some of our city-funded contracts as well, to bring in members from that committee because they've got the expertise as well as others. And we do work very, very hard to make sure that anybody on that committee who's on a scoring committee does not have a conflict of interest. So if you're a service provider, you can serve on a performance management committee, but if you're applying for the funds, you can't be on a scoring committee where you're applying for the funds. As a quick update, there are a few useful definitions. We do have a coordinated entry system in Durham, and this is one of those things that HUD requires us to have as a single point of entry, that anybody who is experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness comes through a single point of entry. And then there is a appropriate screening evaluation mechanism in place to refer households to the appropriate resources if and when they are available. We often talk about diversion in the homeless system, and diversion for us is not the same as eviction diversion or eviction prevention. Diversion for us is somebody who's literally homeless, we're trying to avoid them having to come into the emergency shelter. So somebody who's literally homeless may be able to say, oh, I've got a grandmother who said I can come live with her, but I just don't have the funds to get to New York. I don't have the funds to get to New Orleans. I don't have the funds to get to California. It's like, oh, great. Let us call your grandmother. Let's verify that you can get there, and we can avoid you coming into the homeless system and going this way. Let's get you back to a family member who can help support you. So our emergency shelters are for those who there are no diversion opportunities. There's no way to exit the person from homelessness to permanent housing. And these are really temporary, ideally set up for 30 days. And extensions can be put in place to continue that 30 days for people who are working towards permanent housing. So a person who comes in and is watching TV all day and not working towards housing goals, when they get to 30 days, it might be like, you know, we've got 100 other people out here that want to get into housing. We're going to ask you to leave and find something else. That does happen on occasion. But the case managers in those emergency shelters work really, really hard to engage people experiencing homelessness and working on housing goals. Then, of course, we have to track everything that we do, to report to HUD, to report to the Homeless Services Advisory Committee, and to report back to City Council and County Commissioners as well. So we do that in our HMIS system, which is our homeless management information system. Permanent supportive housing. You may hear a lot about supportive housing and permanent supportive housing. In the homeless system, permanent supportive housing must be used for HUD-defined chronically homeless individuals and/or families. To qualify as chronically homeless, you must have a disabling condition. It does not mean that you have to be receiving disability payments from Social Security. It just means that a qualified professional has documented you have a disabling condition, and it will be longstanding. And you must be homeless for a continual 12-month time period or homeless for 12 months over the last three years with four breaks in that system. So there's a lot of back and forth data tracking and hunting down housing verification to document the permanent supportive housing need and to enter into those programs. Rapid rehousing, we do spend a lot of money in our system on rapid rehousing. This is a short to medium-term intervention. It provides financial assistance, such as a security deposit, first month rent, ongoing rent, utility assistance for households who are literally homeless. You must be, excuse me, you must be literally homeless to qualify for this program. It doesn't work. It will not qualify for somebody at risk of homelessness. We also, with that rapid rehousing, come supportive services. So this is a case manager to work with the family to help with budgeting, whatever they need to maintain that housing stability. Street outreach. Street outreach is our supportive services program, and we are currently running street outreach in our system two ways, through an unsheltered coordinating agency, which is with Housing for New Hope. And Open Table Ministry has a small street outreach program, which they've self-funded for years. And they also have a little bit of state funding due to ESG COVID funds that has helped them to increase their street outreach. And that's working with our neighbors who are unsheltered in Durham, reaching out to them, trying to get our unsheltered homeless in Durham connected to services, interested in coming out of unshelteredness and into the shelter system or finding permanent housing. This is just a quick visual of how our homeless system works because we've got a whole lot of pathways. And as you can see, everything starts at that coordinated entry point. So street outreach, somebody finds somebody on the street, they can funnel somebody right into the coordinated entry system. That coordinated entry system is kind of run through the homeless management information system. So a street outreach worker is able to take an individual's information, put them in the portal, and have them prioritized for emergency shelter placement, rapid rehousing placement, permanent housing placement. The coordinated entry staff, which we call Entry Point Durham, and Entry Point Durham is operated jointly through Volunteers of America Chesapeake and the Carolinas and Durham County Department of Social Services. They staff this program seven days a week, 365 days a year, and have after-hours options. And a person who's experiencing homelessness or housing insecurity will call coordinated entry. They'll go through their questionnaire, and they'll say, okay, do we need to take the diversion assistance route? If so, let's verify that we can actually get you to somebody where you can stay permanently. Do you need permanent housing? Maybe you can skip shelter if we can get you connected with a security deposit and a first month rent, and you've got it made. You can do this because we do have a few people who, just through luck of the draw, what happens? That's all they need, is just a little hand up for just a second. Some people, it's the only option is emergency shelter. And Entry Point maintains the waiting list because our emergency shelters are routinely full. And when a bed becomes available, the emergency shelter sends a note to Entry Point and says, we've got a bed open. The bed is for a single male. Entry Point then goes to their list and says, oh, here's the single male with the highest acuity, the greatest need, based on our evaluation scale. And they reach out to that person to coordinate an intake for that individual to come into emergency shelter and begin that process. Then, from all of these, the goal is to get people to permanent housing. Because our goal is to make homelessness brief, nonrecurring, and not frequent. So we don't want people becoming homeless, and if they do become homeless, we don't want people to stay homeless longer than they need to. So brief and nonrecurring is our biggest goals. So the city, the city has an interesting role because we wear two hats. We serve as the lead agency, which is HUD, because as I shared earlier, our Homeless Services Advisory Committee doesn't have any legal status to sign a contract with HUD. So the city, as the lead agency, does have the legal authority to sign those contracts with HUD, to accept HUD funds that come through us. Think our Emergency Solutions Grant, CDBG funds that we use in the homeless system. We do not accept HUD money that comes through our annual allocation. I'll talk about it in a little while. HUD does do some contracts directly with our homeless service providers in Durham. As the lead agency, we do a lot of the organizing, the behind-the-scenes work, the staffing for the Homeless Services Advisory Committee meetings, the committees. We write the collaborative application every year that goes to HUD and goes to the state. And we submit all the required HUD reporting documents and conduct the annual point-in-time count. And this year, our annual point-in-time count will be January, at the end of January, the 25th. And we are doing that in partnership with Housing for New Hope, so we'll be doing that then. And we are also the coordinated entry administrator, which means it's our job to oversee that coordinated entry process to ensure that we're following the policies and procedures established by our continuum of care, and making sure that we're fair and transparent and equitable in our resources. The city is also a funder of the homeless system. So this is where we use our dedicated housing fund, Emergency Solutions Grant that comes from HUD, and some of our community development block grant funds that come to the city, that we put out requests for proposals. And we enter directly into contracts with homeless service providers in the area to carry out various homeless services. Our recurring funds, this is where it gets a little nuanced. So the city manages the process for the Emergency Solutions Grant, about $175,000 annually, $177,000 of CDBG funds, Community Development Block grant funds. We put the housing opportunities for persons with HIV and AIDS in here. And while the HOPWA grant is not specifically targeted for persons who are experiencing homelessness, there is some priority for persons living with HIV and AIDS who are experiencing homelessness to be prioritized for housing vouchers and other items that are, and programs that are funded through the HOPWA grant. However, with that HOPWA grant, we do serve five counties. And the five counties are Chatham, Durham, Granville, Orange, and Person. And we just received allocations that are taking up to about $900,000 a year to do that. We spend about $950,000 a year on dedicated housing funds, which we have to match. Our ESG funds require a one-to-one match. HUD requires that as the recipient. We are the recipient of HUD's ESG funds. There is a requirement of the one-to-one match. And since the city had been putting that money into rapid rehousing, we cover the match for that rather than making the nonprofits come up with additional funds. So thank you, City Council, for approving that, to continue to allow us to do that and allow the nonprofits to continue to use their money to help people as well. We also pay half of the Unsheltered Coordinating Agency contract. The county pays the other half. Coordinated entry with diversion, that's the entry point that we contract with Volunteers of America Chesapeake and Carolinas. That's what we pay annually to have them do diversion. And that money is not just staffing costs. That is also funds to help people reunite with family, to help people get into permanent housing, to use it as what we call barrier busters. Because sometimes a landlord will be like, oh, I'll take you into housing. However, it looks like you owe landlord A over here a bunch of money, and if you don't pay off that landlord, I'm not accepting you into my unit. So if you pay off this landlord, then I can take you in. So sometimes we do use that to end somebody's homelessness. And then we have the homeless management information system that we have to contribute to help pay for that as well. We did receive some one-time funding, and this is kind of a breakdown of what we did and how we spent that one-time funding. The Emergency Solutions Grant COVID, which is that first ESG CV, 2.6 million. We spent on rapid rehousing homelessness, homeless prevention. And the homeless prevention was for a very subset, small subset of people who were facing homelessness, but not necessarily an eviction diversion piece. The eviction diversion is a totally separate ballgame. This is really targeted for people who, without this assistance, they would literally become homeless and be entering the homeless system. So a lot of this was targeted towards people who were formerly homeless, that ran into a rough dispatch, or people who may have been doubled up, and the landlord came in and said, if you don't both get out of here, I'm evicting the original lease owner. So this was a way of sort of helping some of those doubled-up families avoid homelessness through that process. We also spent 1.3 million on emergency shelter, and that was a lot of the operations cost, food, staffing, for non-congregate shelter during the COVID pandemic as the county used their funds to pay for actual motel rooms. And we have $70,000 for HOPWA's short-term rent utility mortgage assistance. And then we used dedicated housing funds, this is what we're currently using, to fund projects that we started using ESG COVID funds for. Those ESG COVID funds ended, and we ran out of those dollars June 30th of 2022. And the department worked and found with, found 1.3 million to continue some of these programs that we identified, the community and the homeless service community determined were needed to continue until later in this year to sort of cover a little bit of a bridge while we're still dealing with social distancing requirements and shelters. We do have other public funding. So this is where we get into our annual competition funding. And we do have roughly 1.9 million that comes, this is for our HUD continuum of care funding. And 900,000 is spent on permanent supportive housing. We talked about that criteria earlier. And about 936,000 on rapid rehousing, and a small amount that helps to offset our required HMIS costs. HUD, in order to ensure that persons experiencing homelessness don't have a lapse in services, prioritizes renewing current projects as long as those current projects are meeting their benchmarks and goals. In order to do this, the Performance Management Committee does an evaluation twice a year of all of the HUD-funded projects to evaluate how people are doing. If organizations are falling short of the goals and expectations, they go through a performance improvement plan, and we help get them back to where they need to be. There are times where nonprofit organizations say, you know what, this is a little bit more than we can handle right now, and we would like to just stop operating this program. And at that point, we work with them to create a transition plan. We take those funds and we reallocate them in the next competition. This competition that we just went through in the October 2022, when these were due, we reallocated two projects that allowed new opportunities for new projects to come online. We also have state Emergency Solutions Grant funds, and this is kind of about $172,000 a year. This amount goes up and down, a couple hundred dollars, maybe a couple thousand dollars a year. It's just based on the state allocation formula. And each year, we go through a procurement process that we handle, and the recommendations, this is how this shook out for the last two years, and the recommendations that came out of the last two competitions. We did have some one-time funding from the state for ESG COVID, which brought in another 1.2 million, 1.3 million. And we spent, basically split it between emergency shelter and rapid rehousing, trying to move people out of shelter into permanent housing. And this was, once again, one-time funding. Durham County does help a significant amount at times with 50% of the Unsheltered Coordinating Agency. They supply coordinated entry workers with DSS, has two dedicated staff there. And the county has been paying for motel rooms during COVID using their funding sources. So we kind of decided when we were all in emergency operations that we kind of split the bill. If you guys pay for the housing, we'll pay the supportive services. And it was a way of working together to meet the needs of the homeless services. This is just a quick glance at our recurring annual amounts that come through the system. So this is our ESG, CDBG, HOPWA, Dedicated Housing Fund. And, you know, 2.2 million comes in from the city, 1.9 from HUD COC, about 172 from the state ESG funds. When we look at our annual funding, I tried to break it out by, over the last two years, this does include our one-time COVID funds as well as our annual allocation of funds. It does not include Durham County's contributions, and it doesn't include the HOPWA money, and it doesn't include coordinated entry cost or HMIS. So I was looking at, really, here are the activities that have a direct benefit for people who are experiencing homelessness. While all of them are required to help people, this was the easiest way to sort of look at figuring how many people directly were benefited by how much money we put in. So our street outreach, we helped 141 people, 141 households, with 885,000, a little over 1,100 people through emergency shelter with 2 million, 253 households with 2.5 million, permanent supportive housing of 1.8 million, which were 318 people, and our homeless prevention funds that were one-time funding, 238 households were assisted with that $624,000. There was a lot of information, and I went through it relatively quickly. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you for your report. You know, homelessness is a very deep social issue. It affects the micro, macro, and meso level. I am going to now open it up for discussion for my colleagues. Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. Have things improved as the pandemic has improved? Or are we still in the same situation? Because, you know, the one-time money is great, but it does not seem like, you know, the issues that we are dealing with, while some of them were related to COVID, a lot of them are just the situation that we're in as a city.
And help me understand what you mean by the situation improving. Are you?
Like, do we have fewer people coming into the homeless system now than we did a year ago? Do we have fewer people unsheltered now than we did a year ago?
Our unsheltered numbers seem to be flat, which I think is a good thing and a bad thing. We're not seeing huge spikes up. Sometimes we do have peaks and valleys. Every month, we're looking at this in our Policy and Planning Committee of how many unsheltered persons are on the shelter waitlist at Entry Point. And there are times where you see a peak, and then it drops. The challenge with the way we're looking at this is this is by self-report, so we don't have a third-party verification. We don't have somebody going out and saying, oh, yes, you know, person ABC is actually living on the streets, in their car, under this bridge. And people in crisis and trying to survive know that if I'm unsheltered, there's a better chance I get help versus this. So our point-in-time count in January gives us our best snapshot. count in January gives us our best snapshot. And our point-in-time count, the easiest way to look at that is, if you look in your bank account today, that's how much money you have today, but it's not the total amount of money you have over the course of a year. So our point-in-time count is our balance sheet today, but our total number is probably three to four times that who cycle through the, who come through the homeless system over the course of a year. And that number has been relatively, relatively stable.
Thank you. If I were to call coordinated intake today, what is the timeline on which I might be able to access some sort of housing, and how does that differ if I'm a single adult versus a parent with children?
That is a great question, and I don't have an answer for that, because it's, it depends. It depends on who's in shelter, who's leaving shelter, and a lot of being able to exit homelessness involves having to find a landlord who has an affordable place to go to. So if you can't find an affordable place to go to, you end up backlogged in a shelter, taking up that shelter bed while you're still looking for somebody who will accept you with the high barriers that often come with homelessness. I was looking at some of our data the other day, and I did find that in 2017, between 2017 and 2021, the data is most reliable, from the time somebody reports their experience, a household reports they're experiencing homelessness, to the time they find permanent housing, it's taking an average of six months longer. People stay homeless now, six months longer now than they did in 2017 to, to find appropriate housing. So it could be a while.
Yeah, and that's six months longer. So, I mean, do you have, if we are keeping track of the data, do you have like a ballpark for how long it would take someone, you know, to get into, say, I'm a, a family, I'm a, I'm a single parent with a child, and I need emergency shelter, like right now, how long is it going to take me to get that?
Could be a month, it could be two months. It could be a couple days. It also comes down to, we go through a process of, if you're a parent and you've got medically vulnerable children who are under the age of five, you're going to be a higher priority for that slot than a parent with a 17-year-old who's healthy. So there's, there's so many variables, and just because you called with the older child two months ago, and somebody calls tomorrow, and they've got a more dire criteria, we're going to move the person who's most at risk for a negative outcome of remaining homeless into that homeless, into that shelter bed. So it's kind of a fluid thing, and it depends on any given day, who's on the call, and when that bed becomes available, and if the person shows up. Because sometimes people get called, say, yes, I'll show up, I'll, I'll be there, then they no-show, then we try and get them back in there, they don't show up, or they show up and then decide, no, I really don't want to stay in the shelter, then we go back out and start the process over.
Gotcha. Thank you. I mean, our, it's clear our resources are never going to be enough to meet the entire need, you know, the city just doesn't have the capacity to operate at that level. But do you have a sense of, like, how much of the need we are able to meet with our current resources?
In terms of how many people exit the system into permanent housing?
Like, how many people are we serving out of the total potential number of people that need services?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't want to misquote. I can, roughly 1,600 people came through the system last year. Out of how many of that achieved permanent housing, I'd have to, I'd have to get a specific number on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I am now going to acknowledge Councilmember Williams for questions.
Thank you. And Councilmember Johnson brought up some of the points that I was gonna, some of the questions I was gonna ask. That would be helpful data, just to help us measure the effectiveness of our services. How, there was a point in the presentation where you talked about documenting homelessness. How, how do folks document homelessness?
That's a great question. So documenting homelessness, HUD allows the person experiencing homelessness to self-certify up to three months of their homeless history. Then it's really up to the case managers, working with that person, saying, well, where did you live before you became homeless? Where'd you, and it's slowly start working backwards from there. And sometimes people have been homeless in multiple states, and then it's up to that case manager to say, okay, well, which county in that state, which area was that in? And oftentimes, having to call other counties in North Carolina, other counties across the country, and saying, hey, do you have a record of this person being homeless in your system? If so, what are the dates that you have them in your HMIS system, so that we can document them, to get them housed, and get them onto the permanent supportive housing list now. So it's a lot of detective work, for lack of a better term?
Yeah, it sounds like a task to document when you're dealing with such a crisis.
It is. But, you know, you have the rules that you gotta follow if you want to get people in there, and if you don't have them in there, you're, you have ineligible expenses and have to deal with that.
Gotcha. The, the entry of care, where, and this is just for general public, general knowledge, the entry, the entry point, like, where is that? Is it online, or is it an office?
Great question.
I'm experiencing homelessness right now. What's my first step?
So you get access via phone, you can access via Department of Social Services in person, and there's also a Gilbert Street location that, for after-hours and weekends.
And during one call, can directors there?
During one call could also give you the phone number.
Okay, gotcha. So part of, the line of questioning from Councilmember Johnson was just identifying that disconnect, how many folks we're serving, and we have, we have obviously ample amount of resources here, but yet you still see folks out there. The majority of the folks that are homeless, you don't see. You don't, you, you obviously don't know their situation. Would you say that mental illness is playing a role in some of the community members that we may not be able to serve? Or is it just they don't know? Because we do see some of the same folks in the same place, sleeping outside, and it's like, wow, we have all these resources, but they're still there. What, where's that disconnect?
You bring up a really good point. Mental health, substance abuse, distrust of the system, distrust of the government gets in the way, distrust of people in general sometimes get in the way. There are some people who choose to remain unsheltered because they prefer to live by their own rules, and living in a community, apartment, or a townhouse or a neighborhood, doesn't suit their wants and needs. So does all that boil down to mental health, substance abuse? Maybe, maybe not, depends on the person. There's so many, you know, when you're talking about human behavior, there's so many variables that go into that, and every, every homeless situation is unique and different, even though on the surface it may be like, oh, it looks the same. Once you start talking, it's, everybody's a little bit different.
Are you seeing any seasonal trends outside of just when it's cold? And kudos to you all responding to the white flag, white flag night recently.
Thank you.
Just across the triangle, it was an impeccable response. But do you see any other seasonal trends where the numbers may, the commitments may be higher?
Generally speaking, you'll see some patterns, and one of the patterns is usually around the, like, Thanksgiving to New Year's, things slow down a little bit, because family members who need to kick family members out, or ask family members to leave their homes, tend not to do that during that time period. So sometimes in early January, we'll see an uptick of households asking people, or friends asking people to leave their homes due to overcrowded. And then the other time, we tend to see an uptick is right before the school year starts, is, people, or right after a school year ends. Because once again, when your, when your kids are involved, households that are doubled up, people tend to look out for children, and don't want to disrupt the school, don't want to do that. So as soon as the school year's over, okay, you can be out of my house and be unsheltered if needed. And then people are trying to get into schools, so before the school year starts, sometimes that happens as well.
Thank you. I have just two more questions here. The market, the real estate market. So we have a lot of resources that are reactionary to homelessness. We have some that are proactive. How are you all responding to the market? Because it appears that the homelessness, or access to homelessness is, one, is too easy, two, poverty rates, or poverty is, you know, getting higher to what used to be considered normal, normal, everyday folks' income levels. How are you all responding to that?
It's a great, great question and a great comment. The challenge you have with the markets is...
In the real estate market, for the record, anyone listening?
In the real estate markets, landlords, housing providers, they can charge whatever the public will bear to pay. HUD, which funds a lot of our projects, sets what they consider the fair market rents. And a fair market rent, based on HUD, is for the Durham Chapel Hill metro statistical area, and they say, based on 40% of the units in this area, this is what the fair market rent should be. So the fair market rent is set, and when you look at the number, it's like, oh, wow, I might be able to find a place that I could, I could rent for $1,200 a month. Well, that $1,200 a month is not what the lease can say, that is the gross rent. So you actually have to take the Durham Housing Authority's utility allowance worksheet, and add up what the projected utilities are for that unit. And then that $1,200, you have to subtract your utility allowance. So if you're $1,200 for a two-bedroom, now you've got $250 of utilities, your lease can only be for that $1,050, because you have to have a $250 utility assistance allowance in there. So then you're going out and looking for a two-bedroom apartment in the Durham area for $1,050, and you can't find it. That's the problem, is we've got a federal rent standard, the way it's set and the way it works, the housing authority has to follow it, we have to follow it. So even if we started putting other funding sources in there, then you start competing against yourself. And we've kind of gone through this with, I've talked to a housing, colleague at the Housing Authority about, well, could we raise the rent rate to, to go up? And that gets challenging, because you start competing against yourself, and fewer vouchers available. So we're looking at all these options.
Does that, does that fluctuate, does it adjust in real time?
It does not adjust in real time. The market rate is set to begin October 1st of each federal fiscal year, and that is, that is the rate that is in place for the next 12 months.
Plus showing three times the amount of the rent in order to get in. So we have, we have...
The three months is what the landlords and the housing managers require. That HUD doesn't require that. That's just, in order to have qualified candidates, the apartment complexes and home, home providers in the area are saying, I, you know, this is my criteria. If you don't, if you can't show me you have three times the income to get in. The other challenge that we are running into is even when we come in and are offering a third-party payment, whether it's short-term or long-term, we are running into people saying, I don't want to take third-party payments. That's not something I'm interested in doing. It's more cumbersome for me, it's not worth it. I've got plenty of other people here who don't need that, so I'd rather not deal with a third-party payment. So we are in the process of working with Housing for New Hope, which is our new landlord engagement provider, and working with them to try and see what we can do, to try and get creative and incentivize. And then you have to make sure that we don't run afoul of fair housing laws, because, you know, that's the other piece that I've heard from landlords in previous places I've worked, is, you know, this is my, this is my threshold to, to rent in my units. And if I create a carve-out for this small group, I may get in trouble for fair housing law violations, because if somebody comes in through this door, and I don't allow them to come in at this lower number, even though I might be willing to work with you and the homeless continuum, I could run into trouble.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I'm now going to acknowledge Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. It's very informative. I had a couple questions, and I appreciate the point-in-time count is coming up January 25th. And I, I just, I'm trying to, there are a number of things, based on some of the questions that were previously asked, I'm making additional notes here, but I really wanted to focus in on the electronic tracking and the software systems that you're using, just making sure that they're talking to one another, acknowledging that folks tend to pass through one to another in the coordinated care system, and then through HUD, and then through any number of others. And so I just wanted to hear how that's coming along. Like, I know there was an NC 360 a couple years back, we had discussed whether or not it would be able to talk to the current system, and then previously with the eviction diversion, the software, I guess that was purchased by Reinvestment Partners, whether that, or was it the legal aid, one or the other. But the different software systems, how is that coming along in helping to minimize the redundancy of paperwork that folks have to fill out to get through these systems?
Great question, and I wish I had a better answer, but none of these systems talk to each other, unfortunately. And unfortunately, if you come into the homeless system, we have to use the HMIS system. And one of the things that's frustrating for us on the homeless side is that even, we use the same exact software provider for HMIS as Orange County and Wake County, but we, our, our, our data, we can't talk to the other counties. So we see ours, they see theirs, and people go back and forth between Orange, Wake, and Durham all the time. And there is some duplication of data entry. We do try and coordinate when possible and when we can get consent. I mean, a lot of this goes back to consent of the person experiencing homelessness, to allow us to coordinate with other service providers. And when they do that, we are able to pull the information and call and talk. We, you know, also have to deal with a similar thing with the Veterans Administration. We have persons who are homeless in the Veterans Administration. Well, our database doesn't see the Veterans Administration database, and theirs doesn't, they have access to read ours, but they don't have necessarily the ability to pull the reports. So we coordinate a lot with the VA to make sure that our veterans who are in both systems, we're not duplicating efforts. We do have specific meetings to work on through those challenges.
That's helpful. And then, specific to, I think, some of that fair market rent conversation, it would probably be really helpful to get a dated, last-dated, like, metropolitan statistical area, like, number tied to one, two, and three bedrooms with additional bed, like, baths, kind of chart in place, so that people who aren't as familiar with homeless services understand, or even just housing in general, understand that this is how folks in Durham are having a hard time. Because I think some folks seem, get a little bit, I want, I want to make sure the general public understands that the, the federal housing HUD standard rate for like a three-bedroom could be up to $1,800. And there's a lot of people in this city who could not afford that. And so that HUD rate is actually very favorable for, for a, for, in comparison to someone who doesn't have, someone who's working 7:25 an hour. And so just making sure that there are updated charts. I know we used to have that long list of like, who's the provider, and I think that's moved online.
Who's the provider of affordable housing?
Who's affordable, like, whether it's families moving forward, it was a whole, it was a long laundry list that folded up, and it was...
It's all online now. So I think we can, are you asking for, what are the fair market rate rents for the year?
Yes.
And then a link, and then we could do the link, because it's a whole lot of if-then's on the utility allowance, because it comes down to, is it natural gas? Is it electric? What's your heating source? What's your water?
And I think that that's important.
That's really true.
No, because whether you pay water or not makes a huge difference. Whether you're paying gas or not makes a huge difference. But I don't think that we, as a community, have a fair understanding of what it means to pay rent in this city. And I'm not talking about anywhere else, just here in Durham, just what it means to pay rent here in Durham. So what that $1,200 will get you, based off of what our federal stand, like, what our federal numbers look like, and the subsidies that are available. And then I also had just a, a general question on whether the Guaranteed Income Program, maybe some type of expansion... maybe some type of expansion so that you're offering stipends to, to folks who might, who might be able to take that into a, a new apartment rather than having income coming in third-party. I don't know what the legalities are around that, but I think that there should, it's, it's a, I think part of that test case is showing that the, the stipend is probably the best way, the best option as opposed to trying to do this third-party kind of paternalistic, I'll help you pay your rent model.
The federal...
Only your rent.
The federal funds that we use don't allow us to do payments directly to persons experiencing homelessness. All payments using the federal funds by statute must go to the third-party. So to the landlord, to the utility company, to the storage facility.
Is it possible to get that in writing in like a little short paragraph that I could use in our legislative conversation in March with our National League of Cities?
Sure. The, about the federal exclusion.
What would prevent you from using a stipend specifically to support, like, rather than third-party, what would actually help? Because the market is not going to change, and it's going to be even more competitive as the prices continue to increase. And so if we can do, if I can do my part in doing the advocacy at the federal level, I would like to do that.
Sure.
Do you share that? That would be helpful.
I can pull that regulation together for you so you have it.
Thank you.
No problem.
And I think the one other thing I would ask, I don't know what the current performance benchmarks are, but I think that gets to some of the questions my colleagues were asking. If you even share what those benchmarks look like, I think for staff internally, I'm not sure what format you would put that in, but it might be helpful to have that. And if there's any way to help with the coordination specifically around youth with special needs, people with mental health challenges, and I'm saying, give me your wish list essentially. And, there is one more, and formerly incarcerated individuals. If, if I could get a wish list around that, that would be helpful for also developing a legislative agenda around.
One of the challenges that we have with some of those populations that you just named, they fall under different federal definitions of homelessness.
Yeah.
Department of Education has a definition of homelessness, and it becomes a challenge when we're working with the school system. A household that is doubled up with two families living in a house with children meant for one family to be living in, they are not considered homeless by the HUD definition of homelessness until one of them is told you must be out within 14 days. Then they're at imminent risk of homelessness, but they're still not homeless.
Yeah.
But Department of Education sees that, the, the two households that are doubled up as homeless and qualify for additional resources.
Yeah.
So it gets tricky with that. It's one of those things that it would be great if we had one federal definition and enough resources allocated to serve all of them.
Think if you, if you helped me out with this, I might be able to push a little bit on it.
Sure thing.
I, I would appreciate any, any, like I said, any short and succinct information that I could, that I could share with our current legislators in the federal and state level in, in regards to this. Because it's important that, more than, more than just trying to, I mean, I think we've thrown everything at homelessness. And even the 10-year in, you know, 10-year to end homelessness initiative, and trying to figure out what homelessness prevention looks like, I think it means changing some of our federal guidelines, some of our federal kind of software components. And essentially, it's like, the way that healthcare has moved to this electronic focus, and you can now have your doctors talking to one another, we've got to figure out how to do the same thing for people who are without homes or at risk of losing a home.
We do, within the Durham Continuum of Care, our HMIS system does allow, our homeless service providers can all see each other's notes, and they can share information in that system, which does make, a little bit from a trauma-informed care standpoint, people aren't having to repeat their story over and over again within our system. So that is one good thing that we are able to do with the current HMIS system as it sits right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I'm now going to acknowledge Mayor Proton Middleton.
Thank you, Councilmember Hyman. Now, go quickly, I want to thank Councilmember Freeman for her remarks and observations. I do plan on actually having, bringing up a conversation about extension and expansion of our guaranteed income pilot in our upcoming budget cycle. So thank you for the on-ramp for that. So this is an incredibly heartening conversation today. I just want to congratulate all of you for the, for how far our continuum of care has come. My first assignment when I first got elected to the council was to be an alternate to HSAAC, to the mayor. But I was encouraged to come to the meetings anyway, and I'm so glad I did, and didn't just treat it as an alternate. And I remember when we were having conversations then about what, making the continuum of care, making it more robust and kind of developing what it would look like back in 2017, and to see what, what it looks like now. Although there's a lot of work to be done, is it's really heartening. This conversation is also important because for our residents and citizens watching, when they ask, what's the government doing with their tax dollars? I like to point to areas like this. There's no other city in, in North Carolina, I would argue, that, based upon tax policy, just pound for pound, dollar for dollar, does what Durham does when it comes to spending money in this area. Is it enough? No. But when you look at our budget as a moral document, almost $2 million a year in our dedicated housing fund, we've agreed to tax ourselves to do things like this. Certainly in North Carolina, we're at the top of the heap, and around the country, cities of our size nationally, you will find few who have committed as much resources, actual dollars, to this work that Durham has. Also want to just encourage folk, not only on the dais but watching, the point-in-time count, participating in the point-in-time count will change your life. Getting out there with teams and actually encountering folk who are, who are perhaps the most vulnerable point, vulnerable point in their lives, not the full shot of their life, but a snapshot at that point, I think will really give you a perspective on, on what it is to be a neighbor, what it is to be a citizen, and what it is to be a, an official in the city. So I would really encourage all of us, if we get the opportunity, to participate in the point-in-time count. Quick question, and, and for, for, as a primer, when I, when I started attending HSAAC meetings, I was, I was surprised at the number of designations for homelessness. We talk about unsheltered homeless, but you can still be homeless and be on a couch somewhere. So, so give us a primer for residents and citizens watching, the, the number of categories we have for homelessness, and, and that homeless doesn't necessarily mean you're sleeping under the bridge or, or, or in a field somewhere?
Sure. So you have, essentially HUD has four categories of homeless. The first category is literally homeless. Literally, living on the streets, living in an abandoned building, place not meant for human habitation. Literally homeless also qualifies for persons who are in an emergency shelter. They are considered literally homeless as well, because without that emergency shelter, they too would be on the streets. The next category you have is a at-risk of imminent homelessness, which means that there is a documented, verifiable, within 14 days, this person literally will be homeless, unsheltered or need an emergency shelter. The best example I can think of of that is an eviction. And you know when the sheriff is coming to lock the door, and through conversation, you're able to verify that that person, when that door is locked by the sheriff, that person has no financial resources, no family, no friends, there are no other options for that household to not enter the homeless system. So that's your imminent risk of homelessness. Or when you have a landlord asking somebody who's not on a lease to exit a property within 14 days, and through the same conversations verifying that that person has no financial resources, family, friends, other support networks, that they would be at imminent risk of homelessness within that 14-day time period. The third category is persons fleeing or attempting to flee intimate partner violence, otherwise known as domestic violence. That is a category of homelessness under the HUD definition. And then the fourth category is all the other definitions of federal definitions of homelessness. So Health and Human Services, Department of Education. And as a homeless system, we have a, we use those categories to prioritize how we use our resources. So priority one is obviously literally homeless. So resources are geared for people who are literally on the streets. The second category would go into the fleeing intimate partner violence and at imminent risk of homelessness is the next category.
Thank you so much for that. That's all I had. Thank you, Councilmember Hyman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Proton. I am now going to acknowledge Mayor O'Neill.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Davis. We had a series of very interesting emails over the holiday period, and, and so I, I too share a heightened awareness of, of this very critical and crucial area for city government. It's, today, it seems to me that I've learned, for the most part, that this is a highly regulated area in terms of how we interact from the federal level. Would that be a correct assumption or observation?
I would say that's, you definitely have very clear lines that you need to stay within. There is some gray within those very strict boundaries, and we try to maximize that gray area as best we can, but stay within the, within the rules of, within the rules of law.
In keeping with, with the wish list that Councilwoman Freeman talked about a little bit, I would definitely be interested in knowing what your top three impediments or needs for the upcoming year would look like for us. I don't expect for you to answer that off the top of your head today, but certainly if you would give that some consideration as we enter into the budget season, where are we, and, and talking with our legislators, legislator bodies, where, where are the areas that we really can press in on the next 12 months would be helpful? And thank you for, for all your work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before I turn it back over to the mayor, I do have just two questions. One is, you talked about the supportive services case management wraparound, right? And so with that, is there wraparound money that is allocated to the supportive services? And how much is it, if you can tell, and how long are they able to obtain that money? Wraparound services for supportive?
Great question. And it's going to go back to, it depends. So it depends on your funding source. So if you're talking about rapid rehousing, there is wraparound case management for that. That dollar amount is, how much do, does the nonprofit agency spend on rents and utilities? How much do they spend on case management services? I'd see, generally speaking, it's about a 50/50 ratio. But if you're talking about rapid rehousing, that case management supportive services is available for no longer than two years. If you're talking about permanent supportive housing, the supportive services allocated with that are allocated for as long as the person is in that permanent supportive housing program. Now, if you're talking about somebody who's experiencing homelessness and receives a housing choice voucher, or moves into public housing, there is no dedicated source of funding to provide the wraparound services to that unless they happen to be enrolled in a rapid rehousing program to assist with the housing location and stabilization portion.
Yeah. And the reason why I ask, because my, many years ago, I used to be the program director of a wraparound service program in New York City many early years, early in my career. And some of the barriers was the limited funding, the amount of time, and then what you could actually use the money for. Right? My other question is, I know you talked about the continuum of care and, you know, hospitals and, and medical facilities being part of that system of care. And so my question is, is there a guideline against using someone that has an access-one diagnosis, right, as a disability for making them priority for the guidelines of getting housing? You understand my question? So someone who has a diagnosed access-one diagnosis, right? Because as my colleagues talked about, mental health, which is major, right? And I just want to know, if someone is diagnosed with an access-one diagnosis, does that make them a priority? Because that's a disability, if you consider it somewhat, right? And I didn't know, sometimes there's guidelines that are real sketchy in terms of being able to use that. So I was just going to ask that question.
So using a mental health diagnosis from an access-one diagnosis, severe depression, bipolar, schizophrenia, things along those lines, which are your access-one diagnosis.
Diagnosed.
Diagnosed. Those are eligible to be considered for a permanent supportive housing placement. The challenge is, there are significantly more people who qualify for permanent supportive housing than slots are available. And people in permanent supportive housing tend to stay in there for five, seven, 10 years, so they're not turning over every month. And our goal right now as a system is we are trying to help our participants in those permanent supportive housing programs to get to the point where they no longer need the ongoing supportive services, that they need just the ongoing subsidy, that they've gotten to a point where they're able to manage their medication, manage their doctor's appointments, manage the normal life skills without needing a case manager in their lives once, twice, three times a week, once a month. And when we're able to get to that point, our goal is that we use the housing choice voucher that are available to us to move the person out of permanent supportive housing, get them a housing choice voucher so they've got a subsidy to remain stably housed, then open that permanent supportive housing slot to the next person who does need the supportive services and the housing. So we try and, try and move people through and shift who's paying bills when it's appropriate.
So the sort of reason why I asked that question is that I wanted to also educate our residents around the fact that if someone does have a diagnosed access-one diagnosis, it does put them on the list to have some level of priority. Am I correct?
As long as they are literally homeless.
Right.
And chronically homeless.
Right.
So yes, yes.
However, the why, why I'm really stressing that is because sometimes people don't know that. Right? Because you might, they, they may not realize that they're access-one, they diagnose access-one diagnosis. It could really fall under the guidelines to be a priority. So that's why I just wanted to discuss that. I also want to acknowledge one more time, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I really just wanted to piggyback off of Councilmember Hyman's comment and just ask, I, I guess, how does this, what is our, is there a framework for a study around what it looks like as this population, as, like, the, the entire population of Durham starts to age a little bit faster? Because I'm concerned, when we start to think about those access diagnoses, what it looks like when you add in dementia and Alzheimer's and what have you. And I think that that's occurring at a much rapid pace than before because of the graying of our country. But I, I actually had a chance to visit a site in Winston-Salem where they've created like a hub, and I'm wondering if, if there's any type of plan coming out of this, you know, homelessness services work that looks like that. And we can talk more about it, but I do want to just put it on your radar to ping it, in that this, this is going to look very different with 20 more years of age in it. And we need to get prepared, so. And we can't do it right now, but we've got to get a plan in place.
I think you hit the nail on the head there. The challenge that you have is this is where the homeless system and the healthcare intersect. And nationwide, the homeless system and the healthcare system have differing priorities and different skill sets and different abilities. And a lot of these issues that you're bringing up, dementia, physical ailments, require some sort of, sometimes assisted living. The, or, not even assisted living, but a, a home health aide, for instance, or somebody who can assist with daily activities. The homeless system has never been set up and designed for that. The homeless system was stood up in the early 80s and was really meant as, hey, this is temporary, we're going to have to shut down these shelters once we end poverty, you know, once we, you know, the Johnson administration's war on poverty, that was, once we get, once we get through this, we're not going to need these shelters anymore. Well, we still need the shelters. And the homeless system and the homeless staff are not adequately trained, compensated, or licensed to do those kind of healthcare needs. So this is where you start getting into the Medicaid expansions and the need for higher reimbursement rates and the more intersection between these. And there was a good study that was done last year or the year before, I'll see if I can email it to you, that a nationwide group pulled together people from continuums of care, from the homicide and the medical side, to talk about that intersection between health and homelessness and the needs of both, and how it might, how the two systems might better work together in the future.
That's helpful. And you're also jogging my memory to mention that I served on a campus study for St. Philip's. Conversation going on right now around what urban industries will look like going forward is happening. And I think, I'm not sure if the city's even involved. is happening, and I think, I'm not sure if the city's even involved, I know that the county is, but I do hope that the city is also.
We have been looped into those conversations and been asked to weigh in from time to time on-
Thank you.
...thoughts and ideas of-
That's helpful.
-that shelter, what that next step might look like.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I just want to thank my colleagues for a robust, robust conversation around this topic. You know, homelessness is a serious macro-level social change movement. And I, and as a social work professor, you know, I go back to thinking about, in the 1900s, we call her the mother of social work, Jade Adams, who went to London to study about homelessness and came back with the settlement houses, and then came back and moved to Chicago, the whole thing. And so this is something that's been going on for a while, but we're going to have to really be creative and innovative to come up with solutions. And one of the things that I also want to say is that we got to communicate. You know, residents don't know where to go, they don't really know how to obtain, so there's barriers within systems. And I also want to say, to Mayor Pro Tim's point, if you have not been involved with telling the homeless point-in-time, I mean, that used to be a requirement that I would make all of my stu-, not make, I would suggest. All of my students do when I was at Shaw University and continue to do that, and, and just the experience that they get in terms of what they thought of the face of a homeless person. And I remember one of my students saying to me that they had to interview someone who was an ex-professor, was homeless. So, thank you so much, thank you, colleagues. I am now giving it back to our mayor, Mayor O'Neil.
Thank you, Council-